All right, it's seven o'clock now. Okay, all right, is everybody ready? Alex, Susan, ready to go? All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order. This is the Kensington Town Council meeting for Monday, August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. So, uh, this is an entire virtual meeting. We are not meeting in person at all this month. Uh, so we will have a moment of silence. Is there anyone that we would like to, um, bring up?
I'd like to bring up Jennifer Ivory. Um, well, not a town resident. She lived in Kensington Heights for a long time. She's a dear family friend. She passed away on July eleventh, and Jennifer was also one of the people who helped to found the villages of Kensington and was a officer and a board member there for years, as well as with Ken Montpul and riding the mark. Come, you know, we would see her every Saturday coming and going from the farmer's market, but after a long and valiant battle with cancer, she passed away in July.
Okay, thank you. You said it was Karen?
Uh, this is Jennifer Ivory. Hold up her husband Bill and her daughter Nora, who are good friends.
Anybody else? Okay, all right, if we can just bow our heads for a moment. Okay, thank you very much, and we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. Was there any, um, cha- I didn't see any edits to the minutes. So if we can just make a, um, motion?
Sure, I move that we approve the minutes from the July Town Council meeting.
So do we have to do two separate motions, one for organizational meeting and then one for the
Sure.
Yeah, we probably should.
So, uh, I'll begin by saying I've moved that we approve the minutes from the town's organizational meeting, uh, held July tenth.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you.
And now I move that we approve the Town Council minutes from the regular Town Council meeting of July tenth.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, and we'll move down to the acknowledgements. We are, do want to acknowledge that starting next month, uh, the council meetings on the second Monday will be moved to the second Wednesday. So we will be meeting on, uh, Wednesday, September thirteenth, and of course, that meeting will be at seven o'clock. Um, did we determine if we were doing that live or our in-person? I don't recall.
Staff, staff is planning to have the meeting in person with a hybrid option.
Okay. So September will be in-person on the second Wednesday, which is the thirteenth of September at seven P M. And there will be the virtual option, of course. All right, uh, we'll want to remind the council that we are meeting next Monday at Town Hall at, um, nine A M. Um, to discuss the, uh, covenant uh, with the property located at one oh four oh one Connecticut Avenue and the draft lease agreement with one oh five oh nine Summit Avenue for the forty-eight parking spaces at the flats. Uh, council, is there any questions about that for staff? Anyone in the audience have any questions? Okay, we will be meeting with our town attorney and more than likely, we will close the meeting, um, to discuss some other issues with them. Okay. So we'll move on. Oh, uh, so let's get council reports. Uh, we'll start with, uh, Darren.
I have anything to report this month.
Okay. Nate?
Um, nothing. Well, I guess I do have one thing to report and ask, um, for views on is the Walktober event. So we've been doing this now for two years where we uh, have celebrated the, some of the advancements that we've made in pedestrian bicycling, um, safety uh, and improvements along, uh, throughout the town. There's a plan. We hope to do the third one again. Um, we're, we're aiming for, we wanted to see if, if the last week in October would work for everybody. I know that it tends to be a packed weekend, but all of October, I believe, is always a lot of events, but, um, that's the preferred weekend. Uh, even though there's a good chance I might not be here myself for, for a work trip, but we have Alan, Simon, and Allison Durland, who are leading the planning on that. That's the one that works the best for them, and the idea would be to do it similarly to last year, where we'd go and see uh, some of, some of the improvements, probably some of the ones that are along Connecticut Avenue, Matt, that are gonna take place, and also maybe the St. Paul improvements. Um, they're at the intersection there if they're done by then. Um, and what, we've talked about providing an additional incentive. Last year, we, we did end up at Baby Cat, uh, after the, after the walking tour, which I thought was really well received. Um, but this year, we're talking about incorporating more of a, um, an incentive around giving, uh, reaching out to some of our businesses and then providing, um, you know, some vouchers or coupons or something for people who participated in the event to then go and, and go afterwards sometime for the next couple of weeks and, and, and be able to to see some of the establishments in our area, um, probably the restaurants and stores. So we're thinking about reaching out to some businesses to support that event, um, by offering that incentive this year. So, that's the plan. Just wanted to get views on, on the date and, and the concept of, of reaching out to some of the businesses to provide vouchers.
You're talking about the twenty-eighth, like Saturday, the twenty-eighth?
Yeah, it would be, it would be planned for the Saturday, and like previous years, the Sunday would be the rain date.
Okay. I would definitely put, uh, pedals to the metal on your business, uh, list. They're really, really great. In participating.
Oh, yeah, that's good, and, and we can also pick your brain when we think about who specifically to reach out to. If there's others that you have in mind that have been, um, have been generous in the past.
Okay, uh, well, you always hate to hit them up all the time, but I think, uh,
I, and I, I guess since you raised that, I, I, I think we ought to consider just buying some gift cards from them. Because, I mean, the, the, we have money for the, the undertaking, and then maybe always asking them to donate is, is, you know, not the right message.
Yeah, uh, you know, maybe a ten dollar gift card or something like that via.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I would say we're also can, working with Kensington Can, who, and they've been collecting donations from local businesses currently for the back-to-school block party, so be hitting them up potentially soon after for Walktober.
Yeah. No, those are good ideas, and we can, uh, again, this is very early in the planning, but we can, we can talk with, um, I guess we could, I mean, we can consider both options. Should we, should we also, should we just go with buying them ourselves?
I would. I, I like that idea, because it's, it turns it around where the town is supporting them this time around. I mean, we're not talking about large, um, amounts, but if you got a ten dollar gift card or something, I think that would be, uh, would be, would be good.
Would it be, how would that work, though? So it would be specific to each business, or we could have a, we could ask them to participate in this gift card?
I think a lot of them have gift cards. I mean, they can always type one up if they needed to, um, but they don't actually give them out, you know? They could have a voucher that they could get reimbursed with. Maybe, I don't know, we'd have to talk to a couple. Maybe we talk to Kensington Can.
Kensington Can and see how they would recommend.
Yeah, but I think most of them have gift cards.
Got it, okay, great, thanks.
Uh, does anybody in the audience have any questions for Nate about Walktober? I'm seeing any hands.
And then the only other thing is, uh, Sustainable Kensington, and I don't know if you have any updates, if you wanna give a, if you wanna give that update, I'm happy to, if you, if you want.
Oh, just, um, that we're under our second review, I think, of our submission. Is that accurate, Alex and Nate?
Yeah, it's the external review of, of some of their external experts.
Hopefully, we'll hear more soon, but again, big thank you to our team and to Alex, uh, for putting in a lot of effort to, to put in our, um, bronze certification application.
Do you think we'll have more information in, at the October meeting, or September, excuse me?
I think it's decided in September, right, Alex? I forget the date that he just communicated to us.
I think so, and we have one more opportunity to, to make edits for our application. They're doing a second review, and we'll get that feedback. We'll have a chance to edit it again, and then I believe we'll find out in September, October.
Okay.
Yeah, so if not September, we'll know by October.
Okay, cool. All right, um, uh, any questions about Sustainable Kensington? Any hints? Okay, uh, Anne, did you wanna?
Uh, just one quick announcement to share. I just mentioned we will have our third annual back-to-school block party that the Kensington Racial Justice Committee is doing in partnership with Kensington Can and the town. It is gonna be that Saturday, August twenty-sixth, from two to four P M on the lawn of the Kensington House apartment building on Frederick Avenue. Um, our rain location is Town Hall, so if we have threatening storms like we did last year and have to scramble and go inside, we can. But it's a great community event. We really encourage people of all ages to come out, even if you don't have anybody in your family going back to school, you should still come. Um, there'll be music, um, ice cream, uh, we're look, working to arrange some, some food, and there'll be, um, DJ and activities for the kids, and as I mentioned, Kensington Can is very generously working with the business community to come up with some awesome back-to-school raffle prizes for the kids. So I hope to see many of you there.
All right, Connor, I'm sorry, any, any questions regarding Anne's report? Connor?
Just one, um, wanna thank, uh, Mayor Tracy for coming out, and then Susan and Matt for their support. We're looking at the playground at St. Paul Park and applying for some grants available through the state that are due next week, the applications, uh, to make sit the playground area at St. Paul Park more inclusive, uh, both for those with different types of diff- disabilities, whether that's physical disabilities or some of the social emotional disabilities, but also multi-generational. So one of the things in talking to different residents and, uh, people using the park, the wood chips, while they provide a nice comforting surface, should you fall, are really unsteady, uh, for older generation grandparents and people who might be with their younger kids. We're looking at different, uh, coverage, uh, you know, the flexi path kind of surface, as well as maybe, uh, adapting some different apparatuses. So we solicited a few different designs from different vendors and just some price estimates to give us an idea of what to put into a grant application. So the biggest lift, and thank you to Susan and Matt and town staff, Alex, for helping support getting that application together for next week.
Did we make a determination of whether the mulch is, um, we can replace the mulch with the? We made that determination yet?
Yeah, Matt, have you heard?
I, I know you said work with Jeff Wall Striker, which we can do.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have specific clarity on that, but, uh, you know, we're gonna go ahead and file the application for the grant and see what happens. Um, it's very competitive, you know, we can always come back next year. Um, but, you know, we'll go ahead and proceed.
Well, I know the, um, I mean, I, you know my feelings about the mulch. I think it's having that. It's, no, it's not ADA, and it doesn't last for twenty years. You have, we have long ago replaced the mulch that came with that apparatuses, so.
Yes.
Um, okay, Connor, you have anything else?
That was it, thank you.
Okay, um, the only couple of things I just wanna bring up, um, we are, uh, on, this weekend, we're moving everything out of the archives, so, um, we're going to get that emptied, and then we'll, um, look at putting in, uh, getting that project going with the paint flooring and, um, checking the HVAC system down there to make sure it's adequate for ventilation, and then, um, we've taken some applications for an archivist, a part-time archivist, or quarter-time mostly. And, uh, so that's moving along, and so hopefully, um, early by spring, we'll have everything back together. So that project is moving along. Um, the journal went to press today, so we should have that out in the mail for, to catch the August, uh, end of August, uh, events. Um, and then we will be doing another one, uh, probably in October, November issue. So look to have that, um, deadline probably around the fifteenth of September, after the me, after the town meeting. And, oh, and we're getting, I've got a group together who volunteered, um, we're gonna start working on the hundred and thirtieth, um, anniversary of the town next April, so, um, didn't know if anybody on the council would be interested in joining that meeting, uh, joining that committee. So. What about you, Darren? Wanna do it?
I'm willing to help, but I'm not much of a party planner.
Okay, well, you just have to be the sane voice in the room. How's that?
As long as I have a big enough budget.
Yeah, we have, we have a good, we put in a good-sized budget to, uh, I mean,
The hundred and twenty-fifth was a lot of fun, so I, I think, I think it's great that we do it.
Yeah, we're just trying to figure out whether, you know, maybe this one is more friend, uh, family-friendly, kid-friendly, you know, we're, we're we're just gonna try to mix it up a little bit, so we'll, we'll come back with a, uh, kind of an outline, probably in October, November. So. And what else? The, uh, new directory should be going in the mail in a couple of weeks. Um, and we're just doing a final proof on it. Can't possibly ever get it completely right as people come in and come and go. Uh, but we're working on that, and the last thing I wanted to, uh, add was, uh, a council member, um, Kate Stewart has asked to attend our October meeting. Um, just to, we're still figuring out, um, whether she would like to do a Q and A or give a report, but we have her on the agenda for October. Okay, any questions? Okay, I'm not seeing anything, so we will move on to, um, the town manager and staff, Matt, first item?
Sure, uh, council, um, Holy Cross Health Partners currently is located at thirty-seven twenty Farragut Avenue, and they are planning to move over to ten six oh five Concord Street. Um, they have requested to move their existing sign to the Concord Building at a height that exceeds the county's regulations of twenty-six and a half feet, uh, which is requiring a variance process through Montgomery County Sign Review Board. Uh, within that variance process, the town of Kensington has been asked to comment. Um, the existing sign is legal, however, because of the height, uh, requirement, um, we, staff has communicated with Holy Cross Health Partners about possibly changing the sign to an individually-channel lettered sign, which is similar to most of the signs along Connecticut Avenue. Um, staff is looking for feedback from council this evening to proceed with any comments to the sign review board.
Can you put that picture up that you had of the building? So people know, eh, which building we're talking about and approximately where.
So the proposed sign is in the upper left-hand corner of the Concord Building. Uh, the top line height will be at forty-seven and a half feet. Again, the county regulation is twenty-six and a half feet, so anything above that requires a variance with Montgomery County. Um, so this would be their variance, but it allows us the opportunity to comment.
Can you use your cursor just to highlight that area? Okay.
Matt, do you happen to know what standard the county will use in evaluating the variance?
So, in, in the past, the county, uh, Sign Review Board has deferred back to the town of Kensington as the municipality. Uh, they actually did that, again, in this case, there was a hearing back in June. Uh, I provided, provided brief comments to Roger Waterstreet with County DPS, and just, uh, let him know that, um, you know, if they move the sign, there are some limitations, specifically, uh, with regards to illumination after ten P M. Um, they tabled the discussion and asked Holy Cross to go back to the town for comment before they, uh, go back to the sign review board.
If they were to put that sign on the, on the, say, that I guess it'd be the third floor, would that height be back in, um, and they may not be on that floor, but if they came down a little lower, where would they go, so they didn't need a variance on heights?
Uh, probably that's, essentially, the second floor, um, is probably around twenty-six and a half feet.
Okay, so the first floor being where the lobby is, and then coming down.
Correct, so this, they're essentially branding the building, um, as Holy Cross.
Okay.
That's why they want the height. I, I don't know, um, I, I have spoken to the owner of the property, but I'm not sure uh, how many floors, if not the entire building, they're taking over. I can clarify that if, if that's a request.
Okay, and there are no, uh, homes that can see this sign? Is that correct?
Not in front, however, our code regulates that any property that, uh, butts in front, circumforms to residential property, which this property does, illumination, uh, needs to stop by ten P M.
Okay.
Um, Holy Cross is not requesting a variance from the town for illumination. They've stated that if we're, if they, uh, if the town council allows them to use their existing sign from thirty-seven twenty Farragut Avenue, uh, they will not request a variance from the town for illumination past ten P M.
I always suspect that people actually using a timer properly. That's just me. Go ahead, Connor, I'm sorry.
Well, yeah, on that, I was, to refamiliarize myself, I went back to the county code on it. And isn't it ten P M or when the business closes, and whichever one is earlier?
Correct, that, that is the a- actual general language, um, of our code. That's the town code, not the county code.
Well, I think it's in the general provision of the county code as well. General applying to all permanent signs. Um, but I ask only in that if they are planning to illuminate it at all, shouldn't it co-go off when their office hours? And like, I'm just trying to figure out the need for illumination if nobody's coming and going.
Sounds like it's marketing, branding. Which, I, I, my, and, and this is where I'm, I, um, I, I don't know, I, my, my, what I've heard in, you know, the years that Connor, you and I have been doing the d- design view board and new development standards is that that the county was moving away from sort of these signs that are way up at the top of the building and doing more, uh, pedestrian-level signage, which may explain why the twenty-six-foot limit applies. And I, and I know, I know we have some, you know, pre-existing signs for ten four hundred and Bakers Union, where the sign is, is up, up top, but I, I just got the sense from the county that they're looking, from the county planners, that they're looking for pedestrian-level signage, rather than, say, car, you know, distance-level signage. So it, I guess at first blush, it's not, it's not, it's not something that I'm particularly wanting to entertain. So, I'd just be curious what other people think.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I looked at our code, and then there's a number of provisions where we just ride on the county code. So when looking at the county code, there are a number of things that, to Darren, to what you just said, jumped out at me. One was the height of the overall sign, which the county very, you know, it very clearly states a maximum of twenty-six feet. Um, and the illumination factor of ten P M or when business ceases operation for the day, whichever comes sooner. So I'm trying to figure out and wrestle with, what is the need for branding the building? I mean, presumably, people either know it's there, or they're gonna get there by GPS if they're unfamiliar with the area, which will navigate them directly to the building. They'll see the sign when they get to Concord. And so, well, you know, is there a hardship that either the business or the property owner is trying to overcome that they cannot accomplish by putting the, by conforming to the current standards, Matt?
Not that I'm aware of. Um, I'm not entirely sure what their, uh, argument was before the sign review board, because they passed it back to the town for comment first. To which this goes.
We would.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Would it go through a variance process for us? Or, I mean, I know right now, um, all we would be doing is commenting to the sign board. But if it goes through the county, would it then come to us for variance?
It would not, because we defer to the county on the height restriction. If we had a, a restriction that was greater than, then we would come back for a var- actually, the sign review board would actually have them come to us for the variance first.
Yeah.
Um, but we defer to the sign review board. Again, since they're not seeking illumination that would violate our regulations, we're just providing comment to the sign review board with regards to the existing sign. What we can do in this situation is accept it and say we're okay with what they're planning to do. We could go back to the sign review board and tell them that we want a, um, a, a sign that's gonna be on a raceway track, individual channel letters, similar to most of the signs on Connecticut Avenue now. Um, or we could claim, state that we are not in favor of the height. In which case, my guess is the sign review board would not proceed with the requested forty-seven and a half feet.
And so their plan is to take the current sign that exists on the previous building and just move that over to this building?
Correct, um, staff's opinion is that that's not acceptable. Um, the sign has been removed from thirty-seven twenty Farragut, uh, it's actually in the parking garage beneath the Concord Building. It does not look in good shape. Um, we saw it a couple of weeks ago. Uh, although it's legal, um, it does not fit what we would ask, um, a builder of a new, new, um, development would do on Long Connecticut Avenue. Um, so we would like to provide comments that would restrict the use of the existing sign.
Well, I certainly wouldn't want to reward them by using the old sign and giving them a variance to the higher, um, height.
Can I ask about the, or well, I guess it's been taken down, but Matt, it looks like from the materials that were shared that the location of their existing sign on the previous building on Connecticut Avenue was at a lower level on that building, that it was not up higher. Was it placed within the, the twenty-six and a half foot limit?
It was, and I'd be, I'll be honest, uh, I'm not sure how they were able to get that sign on the Farragut Building. Um, the all-state, uh, insurance business on that building was given a variance through the sign review board a number of years ago. They defined it as branding the building, and what they stated in the sign review board hearing when we were there was that no other signage was supposed to be on that building other than canopy signs or anything at the base. So I'm not entirely sure how the county approved that sign, uh, based on what the sign review board had said previously with regards to the all-state sign, which is still there.
So, um, understanding that, so was the whole, that all-state was branding the building, and technically, what I hear you saying is that you would infer that that would mean a sign wouldn't go higher than that, and Holy Cross's sign was higher. But was the Holy Cross Health sign within the twenty-six and a half foot?
Yes, it did not. It, it was, it was, it was not higher than that threshold.
Yeah, it was on the first level, I think. Okay.
Yeah, I'm looking at it on the, uh, Google Map Street View. It's still on the building at that point. It is just above the first floor windows, not ground floor, but first elevated floor, actually in line with those windows. I'd say it was probably right at about twenty-five feet. But in, but at a height greater than the all-state sign.
So council, what do you wanna, what do you wanna do? We can open it up to the public and get some feedback from them if we want.
We can also request them to attend a future council meeting for clarification on what they're trying to do. Um, if the council would like. If not, uh, the intent tonight is to provide comment to the sign review board.
I'd like to see if we have any comments or reactions from the public.
Okay. We can go back to the, I can't see. Uh, is there any hands? Uh, there we go. Anybody would like? Anybody would like to make a comment on this issue? I guess not. Okay. Well, my first original thought still sticks. I'm I I don't think we should um allow them to put the old sign. At the higher level. I just think that's just rewarding them. For.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at the, sorry, go ahead Connor.
Oh, I was just saying to that comment, Tracy, I I agree. Matt had a point that is is sticking with me, which is any new business that we're coming into town. Meets a standard. By having to create these channelized letters and assigns that meet our current code. And while I understand that they are currently moving from one building within town to another, they are relocating and this is. As our code says, whenever a business comes or goes or changes within the building and their sign changes, this is when things need to come. Back into scope with the code. And so at at the very least, I think that goes to. It need you, there needs to be an updated sign.
Right. Well, and there aren't uh there aren't buildings in front of that that are tall. I mean, it's the Jiffy Lube and the Dunkin Donuts. So and then there are larger trees. I mean, you could say that the trees are. Covering up that area, but I think the trees are also large enough because they're the big pin oaks. Or willow oaks up there that could be uh. You know, blocking even the the higher elevation if you're depending on, you know, where you are. I'm not sure being at that height is gonna help you, especially going south on Connecticut Avenue.
It's Google Street View is my guide. And to your point of the pin oaks, and then there's a couple of. Kind of uh fir trees behind the the Jiffy Lube. Until you are pretty much at jeans costumes, you don't. You wouldn't be able to see the sign at any height.
Right.
That it helps them in any way to be higher.
Yeah, I mean, your better view is coming north than going south. But even that. I just don't see the benefit. Of putting it up that high. Well, we need to uh it sounds like we would like to them to get a new sign. Is that? Am I hearing that at least so we can direct staff on how to respond?
Yeah, and I know I cut you off Darren. Darren, what else did you have?
I was just gonna say that um. You know, I I I suspect it's more about getting their brand out to. People, you know, the tens of thousands of people that go up and down Connecticut Avenue. And I, you know, like you say, Connor, Google Maps is my friend. I I I mean, I remember driving around the Beltway. And seeing the Holy Cross Hospital sign. As you as you come around. And first of all, it I believe it. It certainly looks like channelized lettering. But also just it smacks you. As you come upon it, and I just don't, I thought we were trying to get away from that. And so. I'm not even sure if I would support the. Height with the channelized letter. I I my preference would be to keep things down at the pedestrian level. So below twenty six feet.
Agreed. And and to that point, to that analogy, right, the Holy Cross Hospital is also slightly different. That may have emergent. Healthcare needs where you are searching for that hospital under. The rest because you're looking for the emergency room or or labor delivery unit. It's very different argument for a. Nine A M to four P M clinic.
Andrew Nate, any additional comments?
I mean, I care more about the height, if I'm being honest, than than the sign distinction. I haven't seen their existing sign up close and. I know there's a cost obviously to replacing that. But to me, I think. I don't see a compelling reason to support a waiver on the height and having it at the top for all the reasons we've discussed. So far.
Yeah, no, I feel I feel the same way. Um not I really don't have much to add to the to the points made, but. I'm in agreement.
Okay.
If they want, oh sorry. If they want to come back and and clarify something, you know, if that. The height of the not the elevation, but the sign that they have if. If it won't fit because that the front of the conquer building seems to have um like air conditioning units in each of the the bays. I guess, you know, we could. Could hear that, but um. Short of that, I I I would just not support the. Transfer of the sign or or the height.
I mean, it would be great if they did replace the sign, but it's uh what I'm hearing is uh. We're fine with going with the old sign at the lower height. I think that's what I'm hearing. Okay.
I I didn't, I heard the opposite. I heard that that there wasn't support for the old sign. They would. Everyone was proposing channelized letters.
So if.
I can stand corrected, I.
I I don't know, that's how I was following it, but maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah, if our comments are to oppose the height restriction, anything above twenty six and a half feet. They have every legal right to place the existing sign at twenty six and a half feet. If. If we're not okay with that. My recommendation would be. To go with the higher height in a new sign. It would be more consistent with what we already have in the town. As opposed to letting them. Place the existing sign at twenty six and a half feet.
I thought that um and looking at the town code and Connor, you were referencing this, that if there is. An alteration to an existing sign, then it has to conform.
This the the existing sign is legal. Um it it is legal. It was legal when we permitted it. It's legal today. It just cannot be higher than twenty six and a half feet. What we have the ability to do within our comments is saying. It will allow you to go at a higher height, but you have to bring in. A sign that is essentially more aesthetically pleasing to the community that matches the existing signage along Connecticut Avenue. If we don't make that comment. They can place the existing sign at twenty six and a half feet. And illuminate it essentially almost at ten o'clock. Or eight o'clock, whenever the last office closes.
I mean, I don't think from a distance, I know up front, things look a little bit more different, but. The sign that was on the other building did not look bad from the street. I mean, it was not. You know, um in that. You see things differently when you're further away from them, obviously, when then you when you're right up top, but on top of them, but. I think it's just a decision. Do we? Are we willing to allow them to put the old sign at the twenty six or? Let them have a new sign. But give them the variance.
So Mac, just a quick question. The reason that it complies is that the. The light shines through the letters, but not through the blue background.
Correct. Within the count, within the council packet and the public packet, um there's three. Visuals of the existing sign of when we permitted it for Faragut Avenue. The third one is what we refer to as a night night vision. Because the letters only shine through, it is compliant. If the whole sign illuminated, we refer to that as like a box sign. It would not be compliant and we wouldn't even be having this conversation. But because the way that they have the existing sign now, it's just. Letters, logos, it's not the entire sign. It is compliant. It is legal at twenty six and a half feet.
Yeah, I would rather I my the bigger issue for me is the height. I'd rather have the this sign at twenty six feet than a bright, you know, we we we. And I know it's shown into residences, but I I just think back to the I U carpet sign. And I don't want to go through that again. You know, I I'd like to bring the signs down to. Pedestrian level.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with that.
Connor, what do you have to? Oh, that's the old one, right?
Oh, thank you. I was looking for that.
Yeah, I mean, it's not my first choice in signs, but it's not that unattractive.
And and the other thing, I I I guess um I'm remembering their justification about how they want to put money towards patient care and they. Therefore, they don't want to pay for the cost of the sign, which eh eh if if they do what I would want, which is bringing it down in height. Elevation, um they won't have to, but um. Be before we accept an argument like that, I'd like some metric that says they're different from other healthcare providers. You know, it's 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 fine to just make that blanket statement, but I I just don't have anything to measure it against.
Right. To uh I realized I was I'm you know, I agree with that Darren, but to and to Nate's point, I would. My primary would be to have the height, the sign at twenty six feet. Um looking at that picture from a distance, Tracy, to your point, the sign. Works well, it conforms to the current code. If they were still located on Faragut, that sign would still be up and would be providing them that. That same utility. If they want to move that to the other one and conform to twenty six feet, I'd be fine with that.
Yeah. I mean, I as we discussed already, I think. On Concord, it would be a challenge even at that height to see it, so I just don't see the benefit to it either. Okay, all right, it sounds like you got uh our response, Matt. Okay. All right, uh number two, uh yeah, number two, the drill hall H V A C system.
Um so the heat in the drill hall um. Went out earlier this year. Um and we received a quote from our service contractor, M Core. Uh for an in-kind replacement. Uh we also received a proposal from two other um. Two other service providers, one Magnolia. And one uh from Harvey Hoddle. And. We received a a rough estimate. From a company called Habtech through the energy audit for a complete switch over to a heat pump system. Uh council was provided the proposals for each. This. Uh the M Core is for an in-kind replacement only. It would not touch anything other than the heat ducts. In the drill hall, which is used mostly for the playgroups and occasional events within Town Hall. Um staff has put together a resolution to accept that uh upon um. Discussion from the council. Hey. We'll be honest with you, this has been an interesting experience. We've asked. Multiple contractors for different types of proposals, including heat pumps. A variation and we got all kinds of different answers and responses and. We'd like to move on so we have heat in October for the drill hall.
And could we, I besides the cost, the timeframe in which the different uh systems would take, if you could just. Go over that.
So M Core told us an in-kind replacement um. Lead time is about four weeks and then other three to four weeks for installation. Um we've heard from Magnolia up to fifty weeks. Lead time, uh Harvey Hoddle was around the same time. If I remember correctly, I I. I think it was like forty something weeks and then Habtech would have been much longer because it was a complete system overhaul.
That included the air conditioning too.
Included the air conditioning. The M Core does not include the air conditioning. It's the only proposal that does not include. Uh the air conditioning is working. Um this would be just for the heat ducts only.
Also questions?
I said a couple of questions, Matt, if it's okay. Um. Can Matt, do you know? Have you heard from the habitat folks for the entered for the audit, the feasibility, sorry, the feasibility study?
Yeah, they were on site last week. I mentioned to them that we had a council meeting this evening. They said they were gonna try to get the audit or the engineering. Analysis over to us. Um I did not have it as of an hour ago. So.
Okay. Um because just to remind the rest of the council and the people participating, there's a there's a study being done. Where they would get more refined numbers for that five hundred thousand cost. Um they would look at, you know, possible savings for. Some of the capital costs that we could apply for to to buy that down a little bit. Um I think they're gonna do an analysis on the O N M on the the maintenance for it, would how much it would save in maintenance versus our current maintenance costs. For our system now for the heating and cooling and um. I think that it would also look at. Um you know, other ways to to finance it to the potential using loans from the Green Bank and um the Lawton Loans and. And so on, so. I was just wondering why, you know, would would it be worth getting that back at? First, before we make a a decision one way or the other on this. Um you know, I think that could be really helpful to have that information, right?
So Nate, can you clarify when you you said loans versus grants? Is that correct?
Um yeah, so I think that um the loans would be. Something we could use for financing at zero, probably like zero percent um for financing, whatever the remainder is. I think the Green Bank offers those and the Lawton Loans are also. Uh given municipalities at zero percent interest, um if we didn't want to just use our our, you know, our. Our cash on hand or our capital improvements budget right away. And then there are there are loans we can access, or sorry, there are grants that I think they're going to look at what we could piece together. Through the um whether it's the Inflation Reduction Act, the Maryland Energy Administration Grants. Um my sense is that that cost and I'm I haven't seen what they come back with, but that cost could come down closer to the. You know, the the other proposals that you got for both of the. The the full system replacement, you know, in the several hundred thousand dollar range, two to three. Whatever the other one was, three fifty. Um two to three hundred thousand. But I'd like to have that information before, you know, before moving forward, because it sounds like. That should be done and should be ready pretty soon. And so I guess my question is. Is it worth waiting till we get that? Um I don't know if we'd want to wait until the full next council meeting. If it's two, it's two, it's a two month process, right? There's some lead time and then also the install time. Which puts it out two months after we sign the contract. Is that right with M Core?
So the earliest that we could take this backup is at the September council meeting. Anytime you waive the bid requirements, it has to be at a regularly scheduled council meeting.
So that would put us in September.
And that's kind of what staff got to. If we move forward. With anything other than M Core. The chances of having heat to some this winter are zero. Um and that's kind of the position when we. We're looking at it as the playgroups essentially are the only ones that use the drill hall. This the town doesn't use the drill hall that much. You know, we're not talking an incredible amount of energy. Um and we're looking at an in-kind replacement that is manageable within our C I P where we don't have to go after a grant or a loan. And really, we're just trying to figure out how we can get heat in there to keep the playgroups in there this winter. Uh that is why it's on the agenda. We need the council to figure out what they. Want the staff to do in the direction. But you know, if we if we wait any longer, we have to wait to the next September council meeting, which then puts us behind with M Core. And then maybe doesn't get us heat until November or December. So.
Yeah, no, I I I totally understand that, but. I that that doesn't really, if we if it goes in in November and it's functioning in November, we still have a good chunk of the winter. It's just the first month or two. Right, October. Um but do you do you have a sense, Matt, off the top of your head, what the maintenance costs are for the current heating? And cooling. System, what are our annual maintenance costs?
I don't have it broken down into to specific units like that. I mean, we have general costs for the building.
We have a maintenance agreement and it would be whatever that is times twelve, if that includes um. Parts and labor or just labor.
So the the general maintenance agreement with M Core is about seven thousand dollars a year, but I don't have the energy cost breakdowns. Obviously, we have three separate systems within Town Hall. Um I'm not sure. You know, they all two of them run off gas. It's not broken down. Into which unit the main, I would assume that the office unit is primarily the dominant. Cost, you know, we're in the office. You know, eight plus hours a day during the winter as opposed to the drill hall where, you know, we can set the temperatures when we're not in there.
Just not running at all.
Do we know?
Yeah.
If the what the expected, what the life expectancy is for the new. Duct work they're putting in or how long the existing system, I know it's at at the end or over.
Yeah.
I think the existing is over thirty years old, doesn't it?
The existing units are over thirty years old. They're actually condemned. We're not even allowed to use them. Uh they were condemned by uh Washington Gas. Um due to uh cracking the heat exchangers and. You know, I would imagine twenty to twenty five years would be the life expectancy of this new unit.
That's that's long. Okay, the reason I'm asking is because trying to balance the. The um immediate need to have heat this winter with looking at the bigger picture of transitioning to more energy efficient.
The um immediate need to have heat this winter with looking at the bigger picture of transitioning to more energy efficient. You know, lower cost. Um. Switching away from gas to electric so that we can eventually be using renewable energy. I'm wondering if there's a short-term heating solution that still allows us to complete the feasibility study. You know, the IRS guidance will be coming out for direct pay, which will cover up to thirty percent of the cost for. Local governments to switch over to. Uh, more efficient systems that could cover the entire, not just the heating, but also the cooling. And I don't know if any contractors had any, I mean, clearly you're saying what's there has been condemned, it's not usable. But aside from just replacing the gas ductwork, were there any other like short-term? Um, possible solutions?
Not that was provided by any of the contractors, um. You know, my understanding from being with. All the contractors is even if we moved over to a heat pump, we would still need auxiliary heat, which they would run off gas. Um, this is not my background, I don't know a ton of it, I I I mean, I tried to understand this the best I could and. It didn't sound like. Whatever they put in heat pump wise was still gonna have to have auxiliary hill, uh auxiliary heat. For a certain temperature. Again, you were dealing with the drill hall that doesn't get used by the staff, it's used by the playgroups. Um, a couple nights a week during the winter. You know, I I don't know what the exchange or the use of the heat is. We're looking at this as trying to get heat for the playgroups this winter. And use some of our funding for other things, specifically the solar panels that we're looking at at town hall. That's kind of where I'd like to focus staff's attention, but you know, we need direction um from from council.
I think the time period in which it's gonna take to get this changeover is crazy, I mean, you could. Forty weeks means that's just getting the equipment, doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna get installed within that time period. I don't know, I'm sorry, Connor, go ahead.
Without, those are gonna be a couple of my questions, as I look over these different bids and looking at. The lead time, so M Corp to go with just replacing the heat. With our current system is a lead time of four to five weeks and a build time of three to four weeks, that was your point that, you know, it would take about two months. To uh replace the heating from the M Corp system and and make the drill hall operational again with heat, right? But the lead time on the other systems is. Many, many months, meaning this winter's gone, but for some of these, it's. It could be like six months plus just to get the equipment, then have it installed. And to your point, Matt, we would need auxiliary systems to go with them. The other thing I'm wondering is if we replace at fifty-three thousand dollars the heat units, what? Again, knowing this isn't your background or specialty, but the current, what's the current lifespan of the? Air conditioning handling units for those areas?
So they will probably need to be addressed in the near future, when I say near future, probably the next three to five years. So that's something that, you know, we might be able to look at now, knowing that. Switching over to something else and maybe getting a little more help. Um, again, this is not my background, I've asked a million questions and I don't think I'm any more knowledgeable than I was. Well. On this, uh, talking to four different vendors, um.
Are the core units, is there any possibility that the M Corp heat units, if purchased now? Could remain as the auxiliary unit for anything that we changed over to in five years?
I could definitely ask our M Corp sales representative tomorrow morning that question and see if they could use that. Uh, obviously, there's gonna be a gas line there, there's gas in the building. Um, and see how they can incorporate it.
But it may just be that approving tonight or, you know, or approving at the M Corp solution could be. The first step in a longer-term solution to be replaced when the AC units need in roughly three to five years.
That's brilliant, I think that's a really good idea, um, and if even, I mean, even if not, I think if in three to five years. We need to replace the AC units or the the cooling unit, I suspect, and I don't know why I suspect this, just maybe. Just personal experience replacing our, our own HVAC HVAC system. Now, the the air, the air conditioning component is a little bit, is probably gonna be more expensive, but maybe, maybe that's a incorrect assumption. But I think that's a really good plan, I mean, I don't, I think even at that point, it might make sense to replace. The full system, even if they can't serve as an auxiliary backup unit at that point, especially if we can. Get some of the incentives if they're still out there to do the full system as a electrification.
Yeah. Now, I was thinking along the same lines and actually gives us time to tie in the planning with solar. And how that would be designed into the system too for um not only operating, potentially battery storage for. Hour, um, and just the timing with everything. You know, even if we, if we do the short-term M Corp solution. We know we're still gonna need this bigger investment and want to make these other transitions and that is going to take a little time. But wouldn't you want to start replacing, I mean, if we go with M Corp just to get the heat going, wouldn't you want to start? Looking to replace the air conditioning even though it's still working, but to get that in line, so in maybe in two years, you're ready to go? That's what I'm saying, I. Don't wanna wait till it's broken, because then we're in the same. No. Yeah. No, that is what I'm saying, Tracy, I think the feasibility study and and a heat pump does heating and cooling. Hmm. Even though the name is heat pump, it's it's misleading. So, um, so yeah, get that going, planning to to replace the AC and also tie in. With whatever solar we're able to do and just understand the range of options, knowing how long it's taking. Okay. So, am I hearing that we want to uh direct uh staff? Um, to go ahead with the um M Corp, or do we still want to wait till maybe September to see the report?
I mean, I think as long as it's well noted in our our notes or minutes, that that is the intention that we would still take the habitat. Um, proposal, design, uh, the feasibility design study. And 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 continue to pursue that in earnest in the next couple of years. Regardless of whether there's a backup, uh, we can use as the auxiliary, what's being installed for the heating now, the heating ducts as an auxiliary backup. Um, and as, as long as that's well noted, I'm, I think that's the, to me, that's a sensible solution, it's the right, right way to go.
Okay. And for Matt to do what Connor and Matt discussed, having Matt ask tomorrow. If it can, if our assumption that it could serve as auxiliary heating to a heat pump type system. Um, if that's true, or if they would need to alter their proposal in any way to make that possible, they may not know yet, but. Yeah, do you think that M Corp fellow would? Be able to answer that question?
I'll ask. I I I can't, I can't honestly say that my questions have been thoroughly answered throughout this process at all.
Okay.
Well, Matt, you have the M Corp proposal, is it, I mean, you could also share that with um. Is it Sandy Habitat who you've been working with?
Over with Habtech and in the group over there, yeah.
Yeah, and ask them if that's whatever the specs are for that, if it makes, and they've seen the space and they know where those are placed versus where the. Units they would put in go.
Yeah, and I I will add that uh the solar panel system um. Group was actually on site on Friday, um, they did a review of the building, um, they're supposed to provide us a report in a couple of weeks. Um, we did mention them, the concerns that uh Maryland Historical Trust had with the battery pack being visible from the street. Uh, so they are aware of that. And um, I'm hoping that they can give us some good information, um, once we get that report.
Alright, so uh are we making a motion to with some? Uh, elements of do this first before you move forward, I don't wanna.
Well, we should wait till we get down to ordinances, resolutions and.
Okay, but I just, I want to be clear on what we're, what direction we were gonna go in. Because otherwise.
Yeah, I'm in favor of moving forward with the M Corp solution, I have yes, some additional questions to be asked of M Corp and with Habtech. Um, for longer range planning, knowing that. The AC portion of HVAC needs to be addressed probably in three to five years, this would give us some more information. To make a longer-term uh capital improvement decision, but in the immediate. I would support moving forward with the current M Corp services quote and directing staff to do so.
Okay, does the audience have any questions? Joe?
Yes, thank you, um. I I've heard reference tonight among the council that uh these are bid, but this is really not a bid package, this is, this, these are estimates that uh. The town got, is that correct?
They are estimates, Joe.
Okay, okay, and I was wondering if the town manager might just briefly explain that payment schedule that M Corp has proposed. Uh, it's on page two of its um of its offer, proposal or estimate. Uh, ten percent with agreement commencement, forty percent with material ordering, and then fifty percent with progress payments, what, what are they?
Just completion stages. So we would provide a basically a a deposit for them to begin the work, then they would get a percentage midpoint, and then once the um. Once the job is complete, we give them a final payment.
Because I don't know what a progress payment is and and.
Basically, the, for this purpose, it would be the end of the, end of the job, once it's completed, once it's installed and operating.
Thanks.
Okay. Okay, alright, well, let's uh, let's move on. Excuse me. Alright, we're gonna go down to uh ordinance resolutions and regulations, Matt?
Uh, council this evening is the resolution we just discussed, uh, resolution number R dash fourteen dash twenty twenty-three. Resolution of the mayor and council of the town of Kensington authorizing a contract. With M Corp Services Combustioner for the replacement of two resonator heat duct heaters within the drill hall at the Kensington Town Hall. Uh, for the record, please note that the council would have to waive the bid requirement. To accept this contract, uh, which is the approval of an extra majority vote, which is one more council member than is present.
Right, is there any questions before we? To motion? Right, I see any questions, um, would somebody like to make a motion?
Sure, oh, go ahead, Darren.
Approved resolution number R dash fourteen dash twenty twenty-three.
Okay, is there a second? Oh, Nate.
I just noticed that, I don't know if this matters so much, but it, there's a typo, it says Ecor in the whereas. I don't know if you wanna correct that, be as amended then. Do you see that, Matt?
Yes, I I thought I corrected that already, but apparently I didn't, so.
But I might also be looking at uh the version you sent.
Yeah, Susan, I I know I corrected at least one other place, Susan caught it, um, but we'll go ahead and make.
Yeah, because the one I'm looking at is fine.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure that the um final copy is corrected.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, was there a second?
A second.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, thank you very much, alright, last item on the agenda is public appearances. It's that opportunity to bring something up that has not been talked about this evening. Okay. Uh, Joe?
Yeah, I was just wondering um where plans stand for the uh Town's Labor Day Parade, it wasn't mentioned at tonight's meeting, I was uh. We're less than a month away, so I'm just wondering if there's any uh anything to report on that.
Well, as far as I know, it's going all smoothly. Uh, Matt, do you wanna, you and Alex?
We are scheduled for our annual Labor Day Parade and Festival on Monday, September fourth. Uh, the parade will kick off at ten AM, the festival will start at the same time. Uh, we are working with our coordinators to finalize everything, um. Mayor, for a minute, I defer to you to announce our grand marshal if you'd like.
Oh, sure.
Um, I asked uh Jamie Boston to be the grand marshal and he was very uh touched and humbled and he looks forward to. Leading the parade and uh hopefully he'll have his girls with him and I, because I know they'll enjoy it. So.
He has two girls, right?
Two girls.
Can we clarify with the nineteen twelve Oldsmobile, how many people can be on it?
Well, I told him to be in touch with Matt to make sure, because I didn't know if his wife wanted to come.
We will be making some vehicle changes to accommodate Jamie and his family.
That's what I wanted, I just didn't want it to be a day of surprise.
It might, it might require two Thunderbirds, but um.
He can have mine.
Victoria, Victoria's well aware of the situation.
Yep, I gladly give up my Thunderbird, I make my kids walk.
Same.
Maybe they could ride in the back of the Kabuta. So.
Since I'll be in an undisclosed location, you can have my Thunderbird too.
Anyway. Uh, any other questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any.
Can I just make one um reflection real quick, it was not on my report, so I didn't say it then, but it usually comes up in this period when we would have Jack giving the uh. Astronomy updates, but I just wanted to say, if anyone got to see the Percy meteor shower last couple of days, it's been. Really beautiful, um, I've I've been able to see it up here in Michigan, watched it. Blows up late last night with the kids, and it's just, it brought, I mean, it made me really think of him and and just really how. How much I missed those updates, but it was, it was quite the shower this year, I mean.
Oh, well, you were in a good location to see them, so.
Yeah, yeah, we were really lucky, we were really lucky, we saw, I think, seven or eight within forty-five minutes.
Wow.
They were all over.
Wow.
On that note, if you haven't had a chance to see the mural on the backside of Old Town Market. Please, you know, to anybody in town, go and take a look, there's kind of an homage to Jack and obviously Warner Mansion, but to the. Astrological uh happenings over Kensington on that mural as it. Takes its final stages.
It's, I didn't even realize it was, it was up already, that's.
Yeah, it's, it's still a work in progress, Nicole had some other jobs that has taken her away, so she'll be back to it soon, but she's had a great conversation with Claudia. Um, she got some great pictures of Jack to make sure his silhouette is just right, and um we're also gonna try to figure out. How to hide some of those mathematical uh equations, so um.
Awesome.
Yeah, so she's really looking forward to getting back to the, to the mural, um, as she, you know, as soon as she can, so.
Last comment, I made it to Alex, but the Friday before, for the Labor Day festivities, if you're in need of people to put in. No parking signs. I know just the uh, the young town uh residents who could come over and help. And they've already done it, they're well-trained and seasoned.
It reminds me, we do need volunteers for Labor Day, uh preferably sixteen years old, because there'll be, need to move some type-three barricades. But um, which aren't too heavy, but I mean, they are quite large.
How many do you need, Matt, volunteer-wise?
Uh, a hundred. No, I mean, if another, another five people would be really, really helpful. I will also note that you get a gift card from a town business. For volunteering.
Yep.
We have, we have to bribe our Labor Day volunteers. I was thinking, can you put up a volunteer sign at Baby Cat or and um. Maybe Carly's Deli, like the local end spots where people grab. You know, a drink.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a great idea. So just so you know, I'm actually, I'm going down to North Carolina, um, not this week, but the following week, I'm gonna see my son, who I have not seen since two thousand nineteen. Going to see him in person, his wife and daughter, my granddaughter. So I'm very excited, so our mayor pro tem, Mr. Connor will be in charge.
Checks for everybody, no more direct or positive.
Anyway, so I'm really looking forward to that and um, so, but just be gone, I will miss the um backpack, I mean, the community. Um, picnic thing, though, I'm sorry. Sorry, that's okay.
Wait, it just dawned on me, you're leaving the week before the Labor Day?
The twenty, I'm leaving the twenty-second. No, I'll be back. Before Labor Day, the whole week after I get back, so, um. But yeah, so, and if you need somebody from Public Works, I, there's at least one person on Public Works that likes overtime. So if you need somebody for that particular event, let Matt know. Yeah, we we are, and I forgot to mention this in my announcement about the event, but the RJC is having a planning meeting on site. This Wednesday at seven thirty to kind of go through layout and logistics, so I told Matt. I'd call him after that meeting to share what any requirements are and I will let you know, thank you. Okay, and and the last thing I want to say is that Nate, there's still two chickens, they're doing good. And I hope, I hope it's been bothering you too much.
Oh, my goodness, no, 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 um, I only saw it after it was posted again that they were found, but, so there was no. Not too much stress over here, I felt bad for Sam, poor Sam.
I know, she was so funny, she's, should I tell Nate, should I tell Naseem, no, he'll see the email.
Yeah, oh, yeah, we saw, so, but that bush, I mean, where they hide, that, that is a.
That was, that's a toughie, yeah, so anyway, all right.
Okay, thanks.
This one, we can slip one of mine in and see if they notice.
That sounds good, we'll remember that, backup plan.
I know, right, yeah, she'd been, she would have been devastated, you, you left with two, you got to come back to two.
Good, awesome.
Well, she loves your chickens, so.
Oh, well, she does a great job.
All right, guys, thank you so much, I needed a, I needed a motion to adjourn, I needed a motion to adjourn. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, thank you. Bye-bye.